Litigation from the prior year that ends this year, it's not gonna go away. And the reason why it's blue is that, you know, we've talked to, I cannot, no one here can tell anybody not to talk to the attorney. That's just the way it goes. So if Ed wants to go to Frisco and talk to the attorney for eight hours tomorrow, he can do it. And so there's no, and we don't know who's gonna lock in the door. We don't know what someone's gonna sue us tomorrow. There's just no way. So we take a shot, we budget it up when we think it's reasonable, and off we go.
Let's talk about a term increase, man. Is the forty thousand for the BZOs, is that included?
Yes.
Okay. So we have forty thousand for the BZOs from the lawsuit from last year. It probably should be broken out so the town folks know that we're paying out another forty grand from that lawsuit. Second thing is, if we're gonna have a twenty thousand dollar special term increase, we probably should put some sort of control, or if you say you really can't control it, I'd be shocked, but if you really can't control it, then you should at least have some sort of standard report that comes out, so that the town people in our style will know how much we're spending. So for the last three, four months, we've been looking on the website, people have called me and asked me a question, and you can't get the answer because the information is not out. Now, there are certain things, hold on a second. There are certain things that should be simple to report. If you look at, and I'm gonna say this again, but every other town reports the expenditures on a timely basis, so when you write this stuff out, within five days, whatever, it's on their website, or it's reported, emailed, or whatever, it's a standard, you guys were starting.
How many staff do all these other towns have? How many people they have in their other town? How many of them have six hundred people?
Yeah, I'd like to know one specific town you're referring to, that I think that would draw Harrison to our side.
Well, when I research this stuff, I usually circle that accounting, because it's easy to work. If you wanna go through them, I can show you, but it's the same thing.
Dan, last council meeting, they had to have an attorney in here, just play to you.
There was a choice to bring the attorney in.
They had to be.
No, they were wise.
Now, hold on a second. Somebody made the decision to bring the attorney in last time.
Okay, let's just move on. Let's move on.
Hold on, hold on.
Yeah, hold on. Was that, you know, was that a?
Yeah, that was my question. I didn't know that that sixty thousand that was being projected for next year was including the forty thousand dollars from BZO, but I think that.
That's my point.
I think that, you know, looking at what we spent in 2016, which was ninety thousand dollars, and the year before, which was forty-five thousand, we're not done with this year yet. We're not, I mean, we're over by four thousand, a little bit over four thousand dollars, but it's not as bad as the previous two years. But I think that we do need, I understand that we can all just pick up the phone or drive over there, but we really need to be mindful, because this is not my pocket, this is everybody's pocket. It's like looking at, I'm the CEO, you guys are partners with me and are investors, and when we start thinking that way, then we realize that it's not just my money, it's everybody's money, and we have to be good stewards of it. And we really need to just take a hold of these attorney fees and only consult the attorney when it's really necessary, and not for every little thing. Because I've, honestly, I've done a lot of research myself, on my own, without having to call the attorney. I've visited TML's website, I've downloaded documents, legal documents, there is Google, Google is great. So unless it's very murky, dark, that you can't figure it out, and it's worth spending the money, okay. But I just feel that we really need to kinda look at this, because these last two fiscal years, it's just really daunting how much money we've spent on legal fees.
Right. That was a litigation, that was a lawsuit.
So there's a couple, a couple things that we need to handle. So the other, again, you touched on too, right, that there's things where we use the attorney review ordinances, so there's some lines of planning associated with that, if you wanna open up the facility in the subdivision. And then also, when the belders come in, anytime they come in, even though they come in and ask for something, and they don't actually buy the land and move forward with it, sometimes we still have to get the attorney involved. So that's just kind of, you know, that's a bold, cost of doing business. But I think that the action that we can try and take, like, is figure out, maybe kind of do a better job of monitoring that number throughout the year, and if we get closer, then try to raise it again.
So of this number here, it's twenty-four, the budget is twenty. We're actually slightly under, if you, part of this, about thirty-something hundred is the MDD. It was an MDD legal opinion, that we wrote the check, and we got reimbursed from the MDD. It's a reimbursement. And the other part of this is, there is impact fee money, impact fee for the water and sewer. We had to have the attorney review the ordinances and everything. Again, we paid that, but it actually comes, the utility fund reverses us because it's a utility thing there. The other thing I would point out, because I agree with what you're saying, the problem we have is that, we've talked to, I've talked to, in other cities, what you can do is you can set up a policy where, in order for you to contact the attorney, you have to go through the mayor. The mayor approves you going to the attorney. Okay? That's what other cities do. Or it's the city manager. You have a mayor, it's the mayor, it's the city manager. And you, so you have to go to the mayor and say, "I'd like to talk to the attorney." And the mayor can tell you, "No." I don't like that.
We're not gonna do that.
We're not gonna do that. And I'm the guy that would get to make that, we're not doing that. So it's almost like, like a gentleman's agreement, that we're gonna use, you know, try and, that's all we can do, because I won't have that kind of order. I'm not, I, that's not how it works. If you feel strong enough, something bothers you, I want you to talk to the attorney. That's how we got out.
So Lynda, can I ask you a question? We're looking at a nine-month number there, twenty-four, three, ten, forty-nine. But the budget is how many months?
Two.
Oh, right. So we're missing three months, right? And we know the attorney bills back, you know, always like two months behind, but you give me a number, a month behind, a month behind. So do we have any idea of where we're gonna come up? I mean, we're saying right now that we're on the budget, but do we really know?
I can tell you the last attorney bill that I had to pay was something like seventy-four dollars.
Our last, our last attorney bill was seventy-four dollars.
It was seventy-four dollars.
Okay, but what I'm saying is that, the money to book it is from June thirtieth.
Okay.
We have, we have a few more months to sell.
I don't think we're gonna end up under twenty. I mean, again, we're, we're.
So that's my, so that's my question.
That has to be corrected, just based on my side.
Right, so my, my, my whole question is this. Who authorizes when you go over budget?
I did.
That's my whole question, is that, if we go over budget on any of these things, who is authorized to light the chef to keep going over budget? And your answer was?
I'm authorized, under the financial controls words, to pay the city's bills.
Okay, so you're authorized to go over budget.
I'm authorized to pay the city's bills.
So that's the concern.
That's just spending, it's just over the budget.
We are, we're not over an aggregate.
So last year, we, last year we talked about putting in some controls, not only just the attorney fees, but a lot of these things. So when we look at the controls on a monthly basis, and if you're stuck getting out of that, it's all.
All right, let's move on. What's your favorite question?
I have a question. Okay. This is kind of over, taxes, right, and our feet, the feet, right, it's all tax money this.
This is all money. This is all the expenses.
Then, but who is the shit, like, how long it takes, as long as you get stated, like, you have to pay those, you have to pay.
Correct.
Who is the shit, how long?
Who is the rest? Well, the idea, what we try and do with the budget is, look, you know, can we forecast every number exactly? No, that's why I made them color-coded with. So, you know, now, suppose that the coast shirt bill comes in, I'm guessing that for the city, right there, the electricity, we spent forty-four hundred so far, is it gonna be hot and cold? I don't know, but you know when the bill comes in? I'm gonna pay it. Now, am I gonna call a special meeting because that's gonna trip us over to sixty-five hundred? No, I'm just gonna pay the bill. Now, real quick, let me explain something, just as an educational thing, okay? One of the things we did many years ago, remember, I'm hanging there. One of the things that used to annoy the hell out of me from other cities, is there's a thing called window dressing. There's a thing called window dressing. And what, what happens in window dressing is, if you have a mutual fund that owns a lot of stocks, you have to report it twice a year, what do you own? What they do is, the day before they report it, they run out there and give it to all the dogs, and find out which stocks are doing really great, and they buy it for that one day. So then when they report it, nobody would say, "Wow, look at what they've got, they're wonderful." But what cities do is, the very end of the year, at the end of September, what do they do? They do a budget amendment, to make the actuals line up with the new budget. And you go, "Holy cow, look at that, look at that city." The actuals and the budget numbers are like within five dollars of each other. "Wow, these guys are so good." The budget, it's so stupid, it's the end of the year, the year is over, right? It doesn't do anything, the year is over. Changing a budget after it's ended, doesn't accomplish anything. So we don't do that.
She said, you know, it doesn't, it looks like nobody's taking money, or everything, you know, I mean, it looks like your budget, nobody's stealing or anything.
No, it's all there.
Where's the money for the roads, is all I ask.
Okay, so, right, here we go, let's get back to the numbers, we need to finalize the numbers.
Do the council. Where's the money for the roads, is all I said. And what I'm saying is, spend nickel and dime away every year. So all I'm suggesting is, take your numbers, you wanna have a hundred thousand, fifty thousand, seventy-five thousand, what do you wanna put away, so someday we can fix our roads in other.
And I said earlier, Dan, what do you wanna cut out? What do you wanna cut out?
I think it's not a matter of cutting out.
It is, it is. You gotta get to your hundred thousand dollars a year, how you gonna get there?
So if you, again, if you follow the Texas State Budget Policy.
Okay, notice how he can never come up with a number, he always falls down. All right, let's move on, parks and recreation, let's, okay, we've got a yellow number here, parks and recreation.
Based on other towns. So you start with that number, and then you work it out.
But does anybody have any?
We're all talking to each other here.
Okay, let's get back to the numbers, we gotta finalize the numbers here. So I put a placeholder in here, ten thousand on the, on the playground, that number is not gonna accomplish a whole lot as far as resurfacing. Did you get a chance to see the?
I did, but there's only one, like, one company, just by that name, so I might have seen it before.
But you gotta see the magnitude.
Yeah, I do, I do see that, but I think that, I mean.
Yeah, fifty thousand bucks.
Yeah, the numbers are crazy.
As far as the magnitude of that number, for me, that seems like a pretty decent number for getting started with the parks and roads, or getting going, and then once they come back.
I think we have to give them some sort of idea of scope, right, of size of the scope, because ten thousand's enough for a significant amount of, of, playground, it's about two thousand dollars for a playground, not to put it by, scale.
Is there extra budget?
If we have twelve thousand, if we're scheduled to cover a year, we don't have to cover a hundred. If we're able to do something before the year end, are we allowed?
Yes, yes, absolutely, yes.
So it's about three months.
Right. If we do not, if we do not end up using that money, can we accrue it for next year and add it to the ten? I don't wanna use that money.
Okay, we can't accrue it, we just add it, right? So we just, we just meant, you know, we carry it over ourselves, and say, "We're gonna spend twenty."
Well, maybe Dan, maybe Dan would like to take that twenty thousand dollars and earmark it for roads.
I just think we're doing the opposite of what we stick like a hat in a long sentence, state-owned, your product.
Is ten thousand from the, is ten thousand, is ten good, or we go and come back and re-balance it, because we're raising the value of the property process?
Ask that question.
Well, because I haven't gotten the bids from the, from the other companies, I don't know, I said, yes, ten's okay, because we're just now starting with the advisory board, and, you know, we wanna, I guess, you know, have that conversation, see what ideas.
We've got, we've got thirty days.
Well, here's, I was gonna say, so there's still next month. Now, the other thing we can do is, we can put a placeholder number in, say, say ten, or whatever.
Right, it's just starting, so I just don't wanna say.
About six months from now, or three months, if you have something, we can always do a budget.
We can always amend it later, it's, you know, decide to spend twenty.
Right. So we can always, we can always do a budget, and say, well, you know what, we can move things around, or it's still fixed, so they're not slam shut.
Okay, so we might, we're gonna, we're gonna see, okay, so if that number seems like a placeholder for now, it's bigger, then we'll come from there. Town hall improvements, four thousand is a number we put in, we have to do some town hall improvements, we gotta fix the door, in case you haven't figured out, it's not an ADA door, it's not even a door, it's valid for a public building. So we have to do some, some retrofitting to City Hall. So four thousand is kind of a normal number to do some work that we're gonna be doing at City Hall. So that's what they're, that number goes from, is four thousand, any issue of four thousand as a placeholder?
Nope.
Okay. Next up is payroll, next month, we do it in, at the, so at the August meeting, we will have an executive session, where we'll let it discuss and understand what's the average. So typically, what I do is, for budget purposes, I just put in a placeholder, it's typically a five percent markup from last year, again, as a placeholder, and then we determine the actual number, when we have our executive session, and Lynda's, and Lynda's performed it crazy, but I wanna make the numbers be reasonably close to what the actual numbers are, and that's, that's gonna be within a margin of error. And then you have insurance, the same goes, they're basically part of a payroll package. The benefits are higher because Lynda's into her eleventh year, and we ratcheted up the 401K. You might not know, but the city does not participate in pension plans, we have a 401K just like the company does. So we have a matching plan, Lynda puts in ten, we match it with ten. So she's gotta put in, and we match, so we're, we treat it like business. So that's the, that's sixty-five hundred there. The only other things on the, so on the city side, to discretionary, we have capital improvements for the city, I don't know of any, Clint, do you know of any for the city?
Town hall improvements, I don't know, putting in some extra light in the hallways, so it's right.
Yeah, but the last capital improvement did, wasted a lot of way out here, a handicap plucking was our last improvement.
Everything else is, I think, is continuous improvement.
I don't see any, any reason to put a number in there, leave that other than zero, do you know anything there? The only other improvement on the city side is the drainage improvements.
I think you raised a question.
Sorry, who have, oh, Joey, yes.
Can, can you give me a clarification on line item fifty-two hundred there for the last, for twenty sixteen and twenty seventeen, where it goes from budget to actual? That seems to be a.
You mean, are you asking about the forty-four?
Yeah, it's the, it's the.
Contingency fund.
Yeah.
Can I get a clarification on that, why there's so much difference in budget to actual?
The forty-four thousand number, yeah, forty thousand got, relates to litigation. It was a litigation.
That was over two years.
We had a settlement, right, the settlement's over two years, right.
Okay, I thought you hit that earlier, that that forty thousand was included up in the attorney fees.
That's what we're budgeting.
That's, that was last year, I'm sorry, that's this year, and we're budgeting for next year. It's over two years.
So it's when we had.
Oh, I see. I'm with you.
When we had to pay the first one, we didn't have a budget line item for it, so we had to take out contingency.
Okay, and so the difference in twenty sixteen, from three to twenty-eight thousand?
Oh, that, that one? Oh, so what that was, I remember that was, so what that was, was, we, again, this is one of those accounting issues, we had people give us some building permit fees, when the court case was going on, and the court case resolved against us, they asked for their money back. Well, we would take that out of the building permit side, to reduce the building permits, because we refunded it back. The auditor wanted us to pay it out. So on the building permit side, there was like twenty-two thousand dollars over there, that we turned around and gave back over here. So there, that's what that was. That was a refund of a building permit, actually two of them. We were refunding it back, giving them back their money.
There's one, one major one, and then there was one that split the difference on.
Exactly, we had one that was halfway through, and we, I made a deal with the owner, and we split it. And the other one, yeah, was just somebody had just started, they hadn't done any inspections, they had just started it, so we gave back their money. But again, I would've done the accounting differently, but net-net, that's what that was. Okay, so drainage improvements, I took, Liz and I drove around, and we have a problem over on shoreline, where the water goes over the top, and it's a little bit further down from your house, but we need to blow up, we need to blow up a driveway, and put in a box culvert, and fix some of the road problem that we have over there on shore. So, does anybody have any problem with us moving forward with that drainage improvement?
Is that a, is that a quote or an estimate?
That's an estimate from Sam, I can get further numbers, once we size the culvert problem. But, you know, we're almost done, we had to make some, you know, putting in the concrete roads is great, and then after the fact, it channels water really good. Then we had to go back in and figure out where the water was going, and then fix that. That's what we're trying to solve.
That's what we, we learned our lesson from that one, so we're trying to actually do it more proactive.
Yes, ma'am.
We have drainage issues on our driveway, but we are at the bottom, so it looks.
Tell me your address.
Um, four-four-six Men's Lot, or the Gray House, Blackwell's.
Blackwell's, yes.
Yeah.
You know the one that just got married?
Yes.
Yeah. Congratulations.
Thanks.
Yeah, you have that, we tried to put that hump in your driveway when we were pouring the road.
Yes.
We tried to hump it, we, we, but, you know, we couldn't bottom out of the car.
It goes straight down, like, your hump isn't really, it's like, straight.
We gave it a shot.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, we can talk about it.
Okay.
Okay, so, again, I, that's, that seems to be, that's a pretty good number for us, but, you know, we have to, we gotta fix that, because it's gonna undermine the road. It keeps going over the top there, so, that's kinda what that is there. The green numbers, again, are all pretty standardized, so that is kind of the, that's where the expense side comes from. Any questions on any expense numbers?
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just make a statement, you guys, so, if, if the number one concern that I hear out there is roads, drainage issues, or fall apart, or people tripping falling, then we should start with the big numbers. It's like that, you know, that story to tell you in the Bible, where you put your big things in, and then you get your little things done, okay? If you fill it all up with little stuff, and you have to get the big stuff, is all I'm trying to say. So again, I know you don't wanna hear about the process, but that's what the Texas process walks you through, is they start you with the big ones. Remember where an auditor set, the auditor set in his town, what do they do? They take a look at this stuff, they budget the money, they start saving for it, they don't know the total.
Okay, so let's, let's cut to the chase then, Dan.
What we would do is try to save the money.
You're talking about cities that have populations that are fifty and a hundred times or so.
Actually, I'm not.
So let's, let's talk, let's talk real numbers here, okay?
I'm just waiting to hear you name of the city.
Okay, so let's, right, if we're gonna do, when we do the other half of town, that's actually two-thirds of town, it's gonna be two-thirds of the town that we're gonna do. How much tax money do we take in?
A dollar, a hundred?
Yeah, no, no, we take in, so we took in about two hundred thousand dollars, is what we take in our tax line, two-forty. Okay, we have two-forty. In order to do those roads.
Revenue is what? It's not two-forty.
It's fees, Dan, we're not talking about, we're not gonna tax it, because the taxes are what pay for the roads. Right, somebody, what do you think it's gonna cost to do the other two-thirds of town? What do you think a good estimate is, to do the concrete?
One point, five million?
About, between three and four million. Okay, now, are we gonna have to borrow money to do that?
Yes.
Hell, yes.
Of course you do.
I don't care how much money we save, save ten thousand dollars, it does, we're gonna borrow money. We're gonna have to borrow the money. So what we're gonna do, is we're gonna save as much money as we can, between now and then, just like we did before. And when the time comes to do the roads, we're gonna see how much do we have in our reserves, we're gonna take that money, and pay the engineering, pay the surveys, pay as much as we can with our cash, and we're gonna borrow the difference.
Where's the money?
That's what we're gonna do.
Guys, where's the money being saved?
That's what we're gonna do.
I've asked a simple question, where's the money being saved? There's not a single line item to save money for roads, that's my point. The number is zero, okay? That's all it says.
Where the money is, is if you look at the top sheet of the budget, we'll see we have a surplus next year. That's what we're trying to do, we're trying to save money in our reserves.
So we present a budget saving plan? For saving money?
So again, if you, but what other towns do, you say, "Hey, we own roads, we should put a certain amount of money aside for the roads." So anybody remember when we started the tax year? The whole point was, it was to create the roads, and you take money in, you put it in the road fund, and you let it grow, and when you need it, you got it, and then you can borrow based on that.
Yes, ma'am.
I just, we have road budgets coming up, can we talk about it then?
Yeah, I agree.
It's a nice, it goes ahead.
That's a different budget.
Okay.
Okay.
So that's, all right, so what's the point? Let's, let's answer the question, that budget is for road repairs, so that's for the.
Okay, so that's something to include.
So there's no budget, that's my point, there is no budget for the kids and.
But those funds could be.
Could it be in that, like, when you add?
Yes, that's right. That, we'll get to the, we'll get to the road budget, and I'll explain it to you.
Okay.
Yes, that, that can be done. All right, so here's the utility fund, let's move on to utility fund. Basically, as you can tell from the utility fund, everything is pretty much in a steady state. So, you know, we can't control the weather, but right now, we're running, water revenue is seven percent, they had it the same day last year, water, sewer, and solid waste is running about seven percent ahead of, year-to-date, last year. That's our numbers, where we're at as far as revenue side goes, pretty much standard, water usage, everything's pretty much the same, year-to-year-to-year. We got a couple of, we got a little bit of growth, and we have three more houses this year than last year, and that's kind of how we grow the water and sewer. As far as these other revenue streams, these are tap fees from houses. So these, again, how many houses are we gonna have, don't know, but this is a budget here, what we anticipate is three houses. So that's what that is there. That's the revenue side. On the expense side, most stuff is pretty much the same, okay? The only things we don't know are repairs. How much are we gonna spend on repairs?
We don't know what's gonna break.
Exactly, we don't know. So what I did, I went back, I think, five years and averaged it, the average is like ninety-five hundred dollars. So the average is about ten thousand dollars a year, so we just shoot the gap, and we shoot for ten. Now, we spent almost fifty thousand dollars on sewer repairs this last year, because we had a couple of large sewer problems, and we decided to go ahead and fix them. We had some big equipment on hand to blow up the house. Remember, we knocked down a house, we had big equipment here to knock down that house, so we went ahead and used the big equipments, we already had it, to do some major sewer repairs. Now, the sewer repairs are done, I don't anticipate any sewer repairs, there's only one problem in town that we have left, and it doesn't really affect, it only affects two houses. So, you know, I don't anticipate large sewer repairs, but we'll see. So, you know, I don't anticipate large sewer repairs, but we'll see. The other thing that this sewer repair relates to is the lift stations. We spent a significant amount of money on the dam wipes, blowing up motors at the lift station. We incinerated a motor down at the sewer plant, we had to clean the lines several times, we blew up one of the motors down on Stowe. So part of our sewer repairs are the lift stations. And part of this is the chronic problem on Stowe that I put in the CapEx. All right, the other numbers are all pretty, again, plug and chuck, what do you do with the water, the water for one of the wells, the water around the sewer plant, I'm sorry, the electricity, everything's pretty much steady state. The only discretionary items on the utility side, the only discretionary things are, what do we wanna spend on CapEx? What do we wanna spend on the engineer? The engineer's gonna cost us $9,000 to do the impact fee redo, money we already budgeted last year. So that's what that 10,000 is there. Clint, you good with that? Clint, here's the 10,000 for the...
I know, I got you.
Here's the 10,000 for the engineer.
Yeah, he had, I think it was, it was nine left over.
It was nine left over, so we've got 10 there, I can make a nine. As far as capital improvements go...
Can we go back there? Yeah. Again, this is why, I know people don't wanna go through a budget workshop, we wanna go find the line, but there's a $10,000 raise in payroll, and we just blew right by it, and we called it green, and said, "Set state."
Yes. It's budgeted at 18, and now it's 17.
So what's your, what's your specific question?
If payroll's, you know, 16 grand goes to 23. All right, if you look at the budget from last year, it was $13,000, and now we're gonna go to 23.
Right.
So the question is, if you have a town that's growing slightly...
What is our question for our town?
I'm sorry.
Not if you have a town, what is our question for our town?
Yeah, so what would be the appropriate payroll number? So forget about the fact that we all love, you know, Summer, like, just forget about that for a minute, just think about it. What's the right payroll that we want spent in one town?
Didn't we discuss that in the council?
Yeah, so what happened, the reason why this number is different here, is that Summer is the administrative assistant that handles the water, the sewer, all the billing, all of the billing inspections, all of that work. Partially through the year last year, about halfway through, she's been here, I think, how many years? She's been here three? She's been here three years, so we felt like we wanted to make her actually a part-time employee. And she...
Back up even more, this was the study that Ed did.
Exactly, right. Ed did a study to find out her role exactly right.
Her job duty.
What is a reasonable salary?
What other cities do?
He has other cities did a salary study, as an administrative assistant, what is her, what would be a good pay? And the council voted on her pay. We voted on that to increase her pay to set it at a position. The goal in the town being that, you guys, most of you probably don't know this, do you know where our last city secretary, the one before came from? She was a work-study student at Little L. We used to hire work-study students that came here, that's how they ran the city. Well, what we decided to do is become professionally managed. So we have a professional city secretary that's licensed, credentialed, we wanna have